Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Barbara. Board members, questions?
I do.
Let me start with Andy.
Okay, Jack, I have a couple of questions. I want to go to page nine, which is your overall renewal recommendations. Just a couple of terms I'm not understanding. Can you tell me what the phrase replicating signs those campuses means?
Sure. There are a certain subset of charters that the city has whereby, under one charter, multiple campuses can exist. There are other kinds of charters where the charter has, can only have one school under that charter. And so, Espida, Betty Shabazz, Community Services West, North Lawndale, U of Chicago, Young Women's, UNO, all have charters that they can add additional campuses under one charter. Those campuses, though, must be subject to CPS approval.
Okay. And then my other question is, on these campuses that you're recommending, were the ones you recommend are approved for, are these the, so the 36 campuses, are these what are currently in place, or are there new campuses on any of these? So in other words, I look at UNO, there's 17 campuses, they currently have 17 campuses?
There are new campuses already approved by the board as a part of this 36. So there are no new campus approvals via this process today.
Okay. All right. Then can we go to page six? And I just want you to explain to me, so for Espida, if you look at the warning list, you've got two years of failing and then making for both of their schools. One, you're recommending phase out, one, you're not. So can you tell me the difference between those two?
Yeah. The Ramirez campus significantly underperforms its comparison schools. And the early college is making better signs toward progress. Ramirez was the lowest performing school in the Espida network as well.
So I guess my question is, if it's doing that badly, how is it making, whatever this making references, which would imply that it is meeting standards? Because you're kind of saying two things.
It's making, it's making progress toward those standards, however, not enough. And not enough, given the three-year trend that you see in front of you. The students still at the Ramirez campus are not being as well-served as they should be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Carlos?
I have some questions. Thank you for the information. So, as we have a term for renewal number of years, it doesn't preclude us from, on an annual basis, recommending phasing out of a charter?
That's right. Moving forward, so today's recommendation is based on the renewal process. The schools that are being recommended for phase-out closure, the one for the Espida and the one for Shabazz, both of those charters were under the renewal process this year. Moving forward, we're putting safeguards into our contracts to ensure that we have the ability to review schools on an annual basis and gauge their ability to meet those performance standards that we've set for them year by year.
So we don't have to wait those three or five years?
That's right.
In order to do that? Another question. As we have renewals, we're including all campuses within one charter. Why is that? Because there are differences among the schools in one charter. Can we take schools individually?
When we consider the, in the renewal process, we do consider the totality of the campuses' performance and the individual, and the individual performance. For replicating charters, for instance, there is one charter only up for review, and those campuses all roll up into that one charter. And so that charter, and all those campuses that are contained within that charter, are part of the renewal process.
Is this because that's the only way we can do it legally?
That's what's in, that's what's in the contract right now. Moving forward, we will have the ability to look at school campuses within the contracts on a year-by-year basis, not just through the renewal process.
Another question. Do charter schools have to follow our ethics policy that are applicable to other schools that we have?
Our ethics policy does not apply, however, in the new contracts. We'll ensure that we have language in there that ensures, and through, by the way, through the authorization process and the renewal process, we'll ensure that there are guidelines in place. Yeah?
Just as a point of clarification, what we're attempting to do is to ensure that what has not occurred previously occurs. And that is the ability upfront in the contract that we establish with the charter to address many of the issues that you're raising, that we do have the ability on an annual basis to review the performance, that we do in fact, and are able to write into that contract, that they are obliged to follow our ethics. And so all of what has not been, the proposal to this board is to give us the opportunity to do such.
So can we say that beginning in 2013, we're going to have a consistent accountability policy that will be applicable to all school models in every community?
That's correct.
Just one last question. Services for students who have a disability and English-language learners, if some schools, you know, do not do that, or we see very little representation from those students in those schools, as we hold other schools accountable for this, what's our stand on this to move in so that they serve those students?
We expect our charter schools, and by law, our charter schools are required via lottery system to accept students that walk in the door as they have space. And so the acceptance of special needs kids and the education of those kids, the proper education of those kids, is an expectation for all of our charter schools. To the extent that that may not happen in some schools, both during the review process, the renewal process, and now going forward via their contracts, the annual review process of their data, we'll make sure that those kids are getting the services that they deserve.
So it could be a reason for closure or phasing out?
That's right.
If they need like to do this?
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just following on what Carlos just asked, in terms of the same standard, now, there are charters that are not being renewed in this cycle. Are we going back and amending that contract so that this ability to, within the five-year cycle, to move on some of these schools so that it is indeed uniform as of this year?
That's right. The contracts will be different moving forward and will allow us.
Now?
No.
I guess, I understand from Barbara's response that as of now?
Yes, the contract's now, yes.
Well, no, no, this group, are we going back and, for example, Noble Street's not on this list. Are we going to go back and amend so that they're all current at the same point in time, they're all working under the same exact rubric?
I think we can look into that.
No.
I think it's, it will take some time as schools come up for the renewal process to then renew their contracts.
You've got folks at different standards at different points in time.
That's right.
And it would be great to get everybody on the same standard at the same point in time.
That's right. That's right. Agreed. That's the goal. That's the ultimate goal, is to make sure that everybody is operating on the same set of standards.
They're individual contracts, so you've got to negotiate with an individual contracting party.
That's right.
You can't unilaterally make this apply to everybody without.
That's right. That's right.
So, David?
Wait a second. Henry?
Jack, I want to take you back to page 12. It's not a language quibble question I have, I'm really a bit confused. Under fiscal conditions, it says the school may automatically receive a shortened renewal. May doesn't usually mean automatic. So is it will automatically?
Yeah, I think there are certain kinds of fiscal challenges that can be, that can be overcome with solid planning, and there are others that cannot. And so I think this language speaks to both scenarios. There's a broad spectrum of financial compliance issues, some of which, we will raise all of them with the charter school, but some of them which can be more readily fixed than others.
Well, with all due respect, I don't think you should say automatically, then.
That's fair.
Swine to different language.
That's fair.
So can I ask a process question? The warning, is it management's intention to create a new warning list every year?
Yes.
And it'll only be for schools, a bit following up on Jesse's question, that are under a new contract that contemplate a warning system? Or is it for every school regardless of which contract, they have an old form contract or a new form contract?
Just like the warning list you see on page six, it encompasses all charter schools, not just those who are, who have new versions of the contracts. This warning list holds schools accountable to their current contracts. They may be slightly different from each other, but it holds schools accountable to their current contracts. So we are, we are holding schools accountable to what we are legally allowed to do.
So then in our totality of charter schools, we have the number on this page, which I can't remember, six or eight?
Eight schools.
Eight schools that we think deserve warning, regardless of when their contract was up for renewal, et cetera.
That's right. If you'll notice, two of them are, two of them are slated for phase-out closure via this process. Some, some of those folks who are on here, their contracts aren't up for two years yet.
And then to begin a process for an under, obviously to be on a warning list, you're underperforming. So for these underperforming schools, let's say next year, if you thought there was additional schools to add, they have to be on a warning list, then we watch them for a year, then we begin the process.
That's right. And that question actually allows me to make an important point on this current warning list. So as I said earlier, this warning list will be updated in September of 2013, and will account for September 2013, 2012, and 2011 data. And so there are schools on here, for instance, Aces Tech or CICS Basil, who are making progress this year. And if they continue that progress in this year's, this year's school year, would then come off the list because they were, they were not failing two out of the last three years. So there is an opportunity for the schools on this current warning list with strong student achievement data again this year, for them to be off of this list. And similarly to your question, there is an opportunity for schools who fall into, next year with failing data this year, will have to, will not meet our standards for two out of the last three years, and therefore come onto the list.
And was it possible, this is obviously a new process and procedure that we're using. Before this process and procedure, it was just when a school came up for, or excuse me, when a charter came up for renewal, that we were able to basically make these determinations.
That's right.
Now we're saying, really, at any time, we can, a school is either performing or not performing, and then goes through this process.
That's right.
And it'll take, so it'll take, to Jesse's question, will it take five years for us? I'm confused by the fact we can put anybody on a warning, but then we have different standards depending upon the contract. We'll get to uniform contracts over a period of five years, but everybody has a contract, and warning is held against your contract.
Absolutely right.
And as you come up, the contracts will get more uniform and cover some provisions that we didn't have before.
Absolutely right.
Got it.
Mr. President, one last question. Since they don't have to follow our ethics policy right now, what financial guidelines, what financial accountabilities there to avoid conflicts of interest when we go and visit them? What do we look for? What guidelines when charters receive monies that are public monies?
There are, there are legal standards. They have to adhere to the law first and foremost. The, the second is, there are, there are cases in which, when we look at, when a charter school, for instance, proposes us its board's bylaws, we will review those and, and give recommendations to see whether they both comply with the law and have a certain ethical standard as well.
The only other piece that I would add, Carlos, is that because the contract is a legal document, we are deferring and working with chief legal counsel to address the questions that you raise, and I hear implicitly what's in the question, to determine whether or not, and what is the legal, what are the legal ramifications and the legal actions we can take in the current contract when a charter is not meeting its financial ethical obligation. And so we are working with James and his team to plot through that, because there are legal nuances that, quite frankly, I don't know, nor does Jack. And so we need the legal folks there. Going forward, what we're saying is that those, I don't believe that the contracts have been deliberate enough in terms of its contractual development. And so more, being more specific as we develop those contracts and enter into contracts and review the existing contracts, we'll, we'll address the questions around ethics and the academics and compliance issues.
So our review would lead to this uniform accountability policy that not only has the academic criteria, but also the financial criteria that's applicable to all schools?
That's correct.
So just to be clear, even when the current contracts, charter schools are obligated to follow all of the guidelines associated with the dollars that they receive. So if they're receiving dollars from CPS that are misused or inappropriately used, we have the ability to follow up on that. They're subject to the inspector general, he can look into that and make a determination. And to the extent that they receive dollars from other entities, including the state or the federal government or donors, there are strings attached to those dollars, and they have to follow the law that govern the use and disposition of those dollars. Even in cases where, in particular, if the inspector general gets involved at charter school or any vendor, and makes a determination that they misuse dollars, even if they're not CPS dollars, he has the ability and frequently does make referrals to the appropriate agencies for additional follow-up. And that could result in a matter ending up with the Illinois Attorney General or the US Department of Justice.
Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to ask you, could you define a comparison school for me?
Sure. So the comparison school metric is, is the effort to both, so when we evaluate charter schools to do so fairly, we want to look at both academic performance on an absolute scale, so their absolute, what are their absolute scores? But also, look at the opportunity that kids are getting to attend a better school. And so on the comparison school, that metric is an index of where those kids, the schools that those kids would have gone to had they not chosen to go to the charter school. And so we look at the school's performance of the neighborhood schools of all of those children, and then that's an, that's an index that's put together to compare then that charter school's performance to those schools.
Okay, I'll commute with you by myself, because I still, I don't think I understand. Another request, this is a request. Is it possible for us to get all year long the monitoring information on the schools that are on the warning list, so that, you know, this is a lot to take in within a month, so that we would have more time to really study what's going on? And especially when a lot of the information is very brand-new?
Yes. I think we would be in communication with the board at every step along the process.
Andy?
Okay, two questions, one's general, and then I will have a couple of specific questions about Shabazz. So the general question is, tell me, what's the difference between the three-year renewal? Given this process where we're basically evaluating schools, particularly schools on the warning list on an annual basis, what's the difference between a three-year renewal and a five-year renewal?
The three-year renewal allows us to engage in the renewal process much more quickly. I think you're, you're right to call out that through the revised contracts that both Aces Tech and Community Services West are receiving, that we would be able to do so sooner if they don't demonstrate that growth before those three years are up. The five-year renewal, in the case of Espida and Shabazz, I think recognizes that they, there are more, there's more than just one school under their charter, and that they have actually schools that are performing acceptably under their contract standards currently. And so they accept the accountability via the phase-out closure for the campuses that were low-performing, but the five-year renewal acknowledges that they also have campuses that are performing reasonably well and making progress.
Right. I guess I'm more concerned about the Aces Tech and whatever the other one is.
Community Services West.
Three-year renewals, because if we're saying that we have enough confidence in them to continue, but we're going to monitor it, I'm just not understanding what the message we're sending or why, if we're evaluating them on an, so in other words, if Aces Tech has a failing year next year, they're going to be back on this warning list, and we have the ability to renew, to review them before three years is up. So I'm just not understanding why we're trying to get, why we're continuing to get different contracts. I thought the idea here was to try and get some uniformity with ongoing review and assessment. So that's, that's why I'm asking. I don't understand why three, given this process we're putting in place.
Yeah. I think we recognize that the renewal process is still valuable in and of itself, and the fact that, in the case of Aces Tech, for instance, they had a one-year contract last year and actually made progress. I think we're, we're showing that we think they're making the right steps, but with their one campus, we still think that they have, they have to make some more progress before we give them a full-term renewal.
Okay. So I would just, I understand where we're going, and I'm not going to make a big deal about it, but I would just suggest to you that by doing that, you suggest to people that the issue is the renewal year, not ongoing year-over-year progress. And I think if that's where we're going, we're going to, you know, if you're failing on a year-over-year basis, we're going to be on you, and you could lose your charter, then I think we should just, and it's not the renewal process that's the point, it's performance that's the point. And I think that's the message you're trying to get to, and by switching off the renewals, we go back to where we were, which is, we're going to use the renewal process to drive performance, not ongoing annual accountability. So, so that's one. So can we just, I just want to talk to, about Shabazz, because I just want to ask a couple of questions, because as you know, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the community about the school. So I'm on page six, and I, I just want to confirm what I, what my understanding is of the data that, some of which is in here and some of which you've shared with us before. The Dusable High School performance is declining year-over-year. Is that accurate from 2010?
That's right. The Dusable campus, it significantly underperforms its comparison school in 2012. The PSAE composite for Meets exceeds Dusable percent was 5.8 percent. So 5.8 percent of their students met or exceeded on the PSAE versus the comparison school, which was 8.6 percent.
But that's also down from 2011?
That's right.
Both of down from 2010, correct?
That's right.
All right. So the other question that I have for you is that, in some of the data I've seen and data that I've received from, from the school, but also from you, their high, their graduation rate, their attendance rate, and their college acceptance rate are above the comparison school. So can you talk to me a little bit about how that factors into this recommendation?
Sure. So, so we actually believe that while, while college graduation and college acceptance are good leading indicators, if a student is attending or is graduating but is still significantly underperforming, we believe that points to the fact that they're probably not college-ready. And so it can put students, I think when you sort of look at the bigger picture, it can put students in precarious situations when they start college, potentially take on debt, and are not ready to engage in the rigors of college-level work. And so for that reason, we look at, we also look at assessment scores to sort of counterbalance some of those other leading indicators. And so the PSAE does have considerable weight as a result.
Thank you.
Following up on one member, Andrea said about accountability. It's still, and I know we're working toward a better accountability system and more uniform, but it seems to me that, going back to that statement, three to five years, things is very confusing, and I think every school should be accountable on an annual basis. And the fact that you extend that for some schools and not others could be confusing because it delineates that, you know, schools as a group are doing better than others, and yet some of those within that charter are not, based on the data that you've shared with us. So hopefully this will make some sense as you review that whole process.
That's right.
And we do this on an annual basis for all schools.
That's the intention.
Like we should do as a public school system. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jack or Barbara on this issue? Jack, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Today, we are also proposing that the board consider the adoption of two policy changes. The first change we're recommending is the revision of the sexual health education policy. This change is being recommended in order to align our policy to the national sexuality education standards that were released in January 2012. And this recommended change in policy will provide for the first update to the curriculum since its introduction in 2008 of the family life and comprehensive sexual health policy. The proposed new policy provides a single educational program with age-appropriate instruction for students grades K through 12. It is important that we provide students of all ages with accurate and appropriate information so that they can make healthy choices, not just in their pre-adolescence and adolescent years, but throughout their lives. It's my pleasure right now to introduce Dr. Stephanie White, Chief Health Education Officer for the Chicago Public Schools, and she will highlight some of the important changes in this proposed new policy.
Stephanie?
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Morning.
So, President Vitale, Vice President Ruiz, members of the board, you know, Dr. Burt Bennett, I have come before you today to propose that the current family life and sexual, comprehensive sexual health education policy be rescinded and a new policy be adopted that aligns with our 2012 national sexuality education standards. I can't hear you.
Can you speak into the microphone a little?
Okay. Is that better? Is that better? I'll lean in. I'll lean in. Yeah, I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the, I don't know. Okay, we'll just advance. Thank you. Okay. So this conversation clearly needs to start with a underlying definition of what is sexual health education. And sexual health education is a research-based, age- and developmentally appropriate and medically accurate education that promotes healthy decision-making and risk reduction. This education or this instruction will build on a foundation of knowledge and skills that are related to human development, relationships, decision-making, abstinence, medically-recommended contraception, and disease prevention. The foundation years, kindergarten through fourth grade, the foundation instruction here will be on anatomy and physiology, reproduction, healthy relationships, and personal safety. For example, the typical kindergartner, kindergarten in first-grade curriculum will focus on my body, good touch versus bad touch, living things reproduce, the family, feelings, and bullying. As we move to the middle and upper grades, we expand upon this foundational knowledge and instruction to include abstinence, healthy relationships, including informed decision-making, sexual orientation and gender identity, and personal safety. Additionally, we'll talk about the medically-recommended contraceptives and transmission and prevention of sexually transmitted infections as well, as well as HIV. Why is this important now? Well, we have both national and local initiatives around health education, and in particular, our president has a national HIV and AIDS strategy that was presented in 2010. And among the key factors of that is to promote age-appropriate HIV and STI, or sexually transmitted infection, prevention and education for all Americans. Intuitive to that is HIV awareness and education universally integrated into educational environments. Additionally, our national sexuality education standards came out, and these provide guidance for school districts around the essential minimum core content for sexuality education that are provided to students developmentally and age-appropriately for students in grades K through 12. We have our state and local initiatives. We have our Healthy Chicago Public Health Agenda, the city's first public health agenda, which looks to promote medically-accurate sex education in public schools, as well as target reduction in teen birth rates and sexually transmitted infections among our youth. The Illinois House presented a bill last summer that looks at taking, modernizing our Illinois sexual education law and creating a standard for existing sexual health education courses. This is further punctuated by, let's take a good look at the numbers and the need. So Cooks County has the unique distinction, and Chicago, by default, being the largest part of Cook County, is ranking number one in the nation for gonorrhea infections. We rank number two in the nation for chlamydia infections. And in 2011, 35 percent of 15 to 19-year-olds accounted for the cases of chlamydia and gonorrhea in Chicago. Let me restate that. 15 to 19-year-olds accounted for 35 percent of the cases of both gonorrhea and chlamydia in Chicago. If we take a look at HIV diagnosis rates, it's increased by 43 percent between the years of 2000 and 2009 in the 15 to 19-year-old age group. And when we look at 2008 data, 32 out of 1,000 live births, or girls, girls who had live births from ages- births from ages of 10 to 9. Sorry, 10 to 19. I was still stuck on the 10. So I'll say it again, 32 out of every 1,000 births were from girls aged 10 to 19 in Chicago. So since our last policy amendment in 2008, local and national data has shown that there's a continued and increased sexual risk-taking behavior among our youth. If we look at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey results from 2011, we know, that are specific to Chicago, we know that 52 percent of our CPS high school students are sexually active. Of them, 12 percent initiated sexual activity before age 13. 35 percent of our sexually active high schoolers are not using condoms or barrier contraceptive as a measure before their last intercourse. 88 percent were not on any hormonal or birth control, birth control pill contraception, and 27 percent of our high schoolers report never having been taught about HIV or AIDS in high school. The last number looks at, is not a part of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, but it does look at issues of sexual harassment or sexual misconduct and CPS, and as we're gleaning this data, we see that we've had over 900 cases in the 2011, 2012 school year. So then what are we really proposing? So if we take a side-by-side look, we currently have a Family Life and Comprehensive Sexual Health Education Policy. We're currently teaching a Family Life component and a Comprehensive Sex Ed component. However, we only require that there are minutes allotted in the fifth-grade year, and we only require that principals designate someone for the fifth-grade year to teach those allotted 675 minutes. And we don't have the topics highlighted or in a scoping sequence of how, what should be taught when, and we're providing training to teachers to do this, but not with any proficiency or any indication of when we should do train, that when they should be retrained for this. And our message is that abstinence is the expected norm. What we propose, and if you look at sexual health education as a continuum of information starting with family life, that we incorporate it all together. So, all grades will have a minimum teaching requirement. Our early foundation grades of K through 4 will be looking at 300 minutes each year, and our middle and upper grades will be looking at 675 minutes. We're requesting that principals designate a minimum of two people in the building who can learn, get trained, and be the designees to provide this education to the school. The sexual health education topic areas are identified, and they're aligned with the national standards, so we know what's being taught when, and that's information that we can share with parents. But teachers who undergo training will have a proficiency requirement of 80 percent. This takes us from what we currently do now, where we only do live trainings, to actually also offering web-based models, so teachers are able to do it at times that are conducive, and we're able to then say, you're great for four years, we'll see you back again at that time. And abstinence is still the only way to ensure that there is no transmission of any sexually transmitted infection or HIV, or to ensure that pregnancy does not occur, but it's what it is, is a component of healthy sexual decision-making, and we wanna make certain that our students are empowered and aware of all the options. And we, this policy also speaks to language on sexual orientation and gender identity, again in line with the national standards. What's not highlighted on this slide is that the new policy acknowledges that parents are the primary sexual health education educator for their children, that we offer parents the information that will be provided for sexual health education with the district-approved lesson, so they'll have that beforehand, and that parents, as always, have the opportunity to opt out, to opt their children out of any comprehensive sexual health lesson in accordance with the state law. So, this won't happen overnight, and we have a three-year policy implementation strategy. The first year is based upon building capacity and getting our teachers trained. The second year is based upon implementation and the support that the Office of Student Health and Wellness will provide to schools and teachers around facts, supplemental resources, and parent engagement and parent support, so that everyone is in one accord. And year three then becomes our Year of Compliance, where we want to make certain that it's being offered, we have the people trained at schools, and that our students are receiving the appropriate allotted minutes. My role as CPS is unique, as many of you know. I'm not only a member of the senior leadership team, but I also have, in our intentional collaboration with the Chicago Department of Public Health, I have a dual reporting role to the Commissioner of the Chicago Department of Public Health. And Dr. Prashar Shuker, who is the Commissioner of the Chicago Department of Public Health, is here to address the impact of these policies on a public health level, and I can address any questions when thereafter.
I have a, can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here, and I'm very pleased to be here in support of the new Sexual Health Education Policy. This policy provides students in all grades developmentally-appropriate sexual health education, equipping students with the information they need to stay safe and be healthy. While some are concerned that such education is not appropriate for younger grades, I'm here to report that, from a public health perspective, it's an absolute imperative. This policy isn't only about human development and reproduction, it gives students the education they need to build a strong foundation for their future, how to make healthy decisions, and what constitutes a healthy relationship are just two examples. I know Dr. White shared some of the statistics with you, but we know here in Chicago that more than half of our CPS high school students report that they have had sex, and those who are currently sexually active, more than one-third are not using condoms. She also mentioned the teen birth rate. While we continue to be seeing downward trends in teen birth rates in Chicago, which we're happy about, these rates are still higher than national average and higher than even other metropolitan areas. And finally, I do wanna highlight that we do have one of the highest rates of sexually transmitted infections in the country, whether it's for gonorrhea, chlamydia, or syphilis, and our younger populations, 15- to 19-year-olds, are carrying a major burden of that, of that rate. So I'm also very pleased to report that the Chicago Department of Public Health is very, very pleased and working so closely with CPS to address these challenges through different, several initiatives, including programmatic activities in high school, so we're really happy about that. We're committed to continue the programmatic activities, but we also know that from a public health perspective, delivering programs to a cohort of students alone is not enough to make a difference. So, to create a sustainable, meaningful difference, sexual health education can no longer be limited to a few minutes at a few grade levels, it must be implemented across all grades. This policy supports this goal, and does so in a manner that is both medically-informed and sensitive to the developmental and cultural needs of students and their families. And finally, I do wanna note that as we continue to implement our very ambitious Healthy Chicago Public Health Agenda, we could not be more pleased with the support that we're getting from CPS and the great work that we're doing with Dr. White and under her leadership. We definitely have someone who understands the critical importance of a healthy student body, both in terms of our overall health of our communities, but also for academic success. So thank you so much, and I know, Dr. White, or I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. for coming here today. Questions for Carlos?
Yes, thank you. I know the policy entails parents up front, and that's powerful, because they have the opportunity to opt out, but before they opt out, we wanna make sure that they know all the topics that are gonna be covered in every grade, and many times that will not entail one parent meeting, since not all parents can come to one meeting, but it entails a plan, so that they know exactly what the children are being exposed to. So, that's just a comment, but the other comment I have is how do we access other resources in the school? That sometimes, you know, there are itinerant services, the nurse, the psychologist, the social worker, and the counselor, to be part of this guidance and this whole process. Is that included in our policy in some kind of way?
So the policy doesn't speak to that directly. What we are doing, though, is ensuring that in the guidance that we provide around the policy, we're engaging everyone in the, in what that guidance looks like. For example, we're asking that principals designate two people. We wanna engage everyone in identifying who are the best people to do this. Is it the science teacher, is it the PE teacher, does, what's the role of the school nurse in this? Clearly, the clinicians are burdened with a great responsibility, and we want for this to be a part of the core instruction that occurs, reinforced by everyone, so we're ensuring that we also have engaged our community partners, who can come in and be a resource for schools, to either deliver or provide supplemental support around this information, and that we get it to where it needs to be. Also, just to highlight your first comment, the current policy has guidance that recommends parents are notified, recommends parents have a meeting. This policy specifically states that parents will be notified, and they will have the topic list of what will be discussed for the classes.
Thank you.
Quick question, Dr. White, or Commissioner, do either of you have any data or anecdotal knowledge of any districts or large urban centers where the school has adopted similar standards on health education and has any impact on public health, so that hopefully Cook County won't rack first on some of these things any longer?
Well, clearly, it's, and I'll have the Commissioner joining as well, but clearly it's a multi-pronged approach. The work we do won't tackle it altogether, but it will make a, take an entirely huge bite out of it, which is important. We know that other districts are struggling. We jostle between the one and two position with LA County, so we know that it exists there, and people are, with the new standards, embracing what the recommendations are and getting it done. I think the difference is that we really recognize the inherent need, and as I highlight my role again, being unique to have this body here, we're uniquely juxtapositioned to be able to really create and effect change, and we expect to see that as we look at our final implementation phase and review the numbers.
So, just, just, just to complement on what Dr. White mentioned, as we, as we look at these type of approaches to address these type of significant issues, we look at policy approach, which is extremely important, but it's coupled with actual programmatic interventions, and we work very closely with other urban cities and large health departments across the country on how they address teen birth rate, how they address STI in schools, and we take some of these models, and actually, one of our key strategies that we're working on with CPS is an STI screening, or sexually transmitted infection screening, services offered at some of our high schools, and we're seeing already on the schools that we've gone to years after years, that the rates in those schools are going down, and when we pick up a new school, the rate is higher again. So, so it's really a combination between programmatic efforts and policy, and we're in constant collaboration and contact with the other large urban health departments like LA and Baltimore and New York, to make sure that we're sharing best practices.
Thank you. Any?
I have something that I, I had to question myself about to say, but it's bugging me. So, the acronym that you're using, so everywhere we talk about this, we call it SHE, and that bothers me, because I think for people who don't know what you're talking about and who are just gonna see it, there, it implies that we're only talking about an issue that impacts women and girls. And so, I just would, I know it's a small thing, and I don't really like it, but we use acronyms a lot here. We do. And I would just hate to have someone read, or people, young people read into this, or anybody who's applying it, read into it, that we're only talking about girls, and you use it a lot, which is why it bothered me, so, not that you use it, but you use.
I understand.
So, I'd ask you to think about calling it something else.
Excellent feedback.
Thank you very much, Dr. White. I appreciate your efforts in this regard.
The second policy change we're seeking this month is a change to our principal eligibility policy. We know that really great schools do not exist without great school leaders who help to motivate, provide the resources and the tools that teachers need that ultimately makes our children successful. Having served as a principal myself for over eight years, and as a teacher for more than 10 years, I appreciate and respect the complexities, as well as the challenges, that school leaders and teachers face every single day in our schools. You'll recall, last month, we announced the Principal Quality Initiative to ensure that we have effective principals in every school across the district. This initiative puts in place, however, a new principal eligibility and selection process that will set the common bar and the common standard for any adult who wants to lead one of our schools. As a part of this program, aspiring principals will be evaluated in part through a day-in-a-life scenario, in which candidates will have to demonstrate management and leadership skills in a simulated exercise that puts the candidates through a day, the daily rigor of the principal experience. And with that, Alicia? Oh, there she is.
Good afternoon, members of the board. As Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett noted, we are aiming to ensure that we have a highly effective leader in every one of our schools by the 2014-15 school year, and in that regard, I was here last month to talk to you about five key initiatives with a focus on evaluation. This month, we're focused on eligibility, our selection process, and very specifically, I'm here to propose some significant changes to our principal eligibility policy. Today, I'm recommending to you for consideration three significant changes to rescind and adopt a new principal eligibility policy. The first of which is related to our incumbent sitting principals. Today, our sitting principals who have not successfully completed our eligibility process years ago may not be able to transfer schools from one school to another school without successfully completing the eligibility process. What we're here to propose to you is another pathway to do that. Very specifically, we have confidence and faith in our new evaluation process, as it is comprehensive and objective and inclusive of both results and principal practice. As such, we're recommending that a proficient or better evaluation for two consecutive years for our sitting school principals would be a path to exempting them from the eligibility process, such that they could change schools. In order to renew principal contracts, this eligibility policy does not apply, so a sitting principal who remains in a school and for which the local school council is considering renewing their contract, they would do so on the same basis that they do so today, considering performance, track record, and improvement in the school. The second major change that I'm proposing to you is with regard to application timeline. Very specifically, today, principals have to wait one year, principal candidates, excuse me, have to wait one year if they do not successfully complete eligibility before they can retake the eligibility process. What we're proposing to you is that decision be left up to the candidate, that they can retake up to two times within one calendar year, but in, if, in the event that they do not successfully complete that application process after two tries, they would not be able to retake that process or do it over for another three years. Our process and our recommendation there is simple. We know that we have a reliable assessment process. Fewer than 1 percent of our candidates today who fail to successfully complete in their first two tries ever successfully complete. So I'm confident in making this recommendation to you, that it's fair and the right thing to do to ensure that every school leader by 2014-15 is highly effective in our schools. Last but not least, the third recommendation with regard to the policy is about continuation of membership. Today, we have a time expiration on our principal eligibility policy, such that if you complete successfully the eligibility process but do not attain a principalship, the clock starts ticking, and your membership in the pool expires three years after that date that you took it. What we're recommending is that we remove that time-bound criteria and instead replace it, similar to what I shared on incumbent principals, with the principal performance evaluation process, and maintaining a proficient performance evaluation, maintaining your proper certifications and endorsements to be a school administrator in the state of Illinois, and maintaining continuous employment as a school administrator or leader for at least three of the last five years would be the qualifier to retain your membership as an eligible candidate in the principal pool. With that, three main changes, making better use of our principal evaluation process that we announced and shared with you in January. Going forward, ensuring that our high-performing school leaders are recognized Going forward, ensuring that our high-performing school leaders are recognized as such and able to effectively transfer schools if they choose, assuming they meet the conditions as laid out. And with that, I open it for questions.
Questions for Alicia? Anyone?
I have one. I have one. What's the evidence that we have that our assessment process leads to principal effectiveness, especially because, you know, we've changed it in the past, and we're going to change it now again? Where does that evidence come from?
So, the evidence on our success in the process has to do with how we're looking at the overall performance evaluations, as well as student outcomes within the school of our school leaders who successfully complete. And I'd be happy to continue to follow up with you as we change the process and review that evidence with you.
So, we're tracking down principals who moved through this process and their sense of accomplishment in their schools?
That's correct.
I think it's a good idea for principals who demonstrate success to remain on the list, you know, if they meet certain criteria. I think that's, that's a big difference. But the other thing, have we included a lot of principals in the revision of this process?
So, yes, absolutely. We've included over, 300 principals have actually been participating in redesigning the eligibility process itself, and a portion of those principals, approximately 50, have given us input on the policy specifically. We also spoke with the Chicago Principals Association multiple times, and they actually helped us in editing the policy. We met with the Chicago Leadership Collaborative Partners, our pipeline partners, reviewed the policy with them, and accepted feedback last week. And most recently, we just met with the Local School Advisory Council earlier this week and received their feedback and incorporated it as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Not a question, and I don't want to sound like I'm a member of Alicia's fan club, but this was brought to her. Okay, yeah, because we get on the departments when they don't do well. So, I think, or do what we need them to do, so I think we do need to commend them when they do well, because she and I were butting heads, not really, but sort of over a year ago, I came to her with concerns that I was hearing from the field and as the principal. And she worked really hard and honestly has come back with 99.9% of what I've heard, her department has come back from principals and from myself having been one. So, I just, I just feel so good about that, and more people need to know about the changes that are happening. And I hope the word will get out to the principals, because some kind of way it stays here. I don't know. But I want to make very sure that Denise, who's over the chiefs and things, that we get this out, that this was a lot of work, we heard their voices, and we responded. Thank you very, very much, Alicia.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you, Alicia, and, you know, that's high praise, you know, coming from where it comes.
It's deserved, though.
It sounds, it sounds to me like you've adopted her policy, and she loves it.
She did right.
Thank you, President of the Board, members of the Board. This concludes my report to the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett.